We should all get together and take this step. This is not an us for some them conversation. But I thought we need to get together and see where we are, where we need to get to quickly, or a little longer term with our streetscape ideas and projects and see what we got, see where we can go. It's a good time because it's lunchtime season for the village. So I know we've worked in some funds in the past which went on spending the last year because we decided to take a sort of broader view of what we maybe should do here. Obviously, what we have to do is of the utmost importance. So if we could, I'd like to ask Brad and maybe Ralph, if they could kind of give a quick summary of sort of how we started, the report we got, and just a very quickie, you know, two-minute, five-minute kind of, there you go.
So back in July last year, the planning commission directed by trustee to evaluate the streetscape. We're looking at the area on Seventh Street, Park Franklin Avenue as well, as well as New Hyde Park. Every area is also. So the planning commission, along with its members of the Chamber of Commerce, walked to those areas back in the fall and prepared a comprehensive list, about thirty-two items in this area of the village and half a dozen or so in New Hyde Park. Areas that we felt needed to be addressed. Things for the sidewalks are bad, the kiosks, the lack of trash, receptacles. Some architectural improvements, the area, the back facade of the buildings on the parking lot 7S, which you see every day with the trains certainly, but needs to be brought up and we thought into a pedestrian friendly area, where it's not, it's dangerous, riding, walking along the sidewalk in the alleyway going from Franklin into the parking lot. There's no guardrail, there's no curb, people park on the sidewalk. So we made this long list and recommendations to be studied either going back to the original review that had been done not too long ago by De Bruin, or if we felt that needed to be updated or competitively looked at. That was sort of the next step we were going to. Meanwhile, this is going on, we're having a parking study prepared by Jack Mark. They've been analyzing the parking areas in the same locations I described. They got a little bit of a late start, so they couldn't do it until the Christmas season, but they've been doing it the last few weeks on both. And that's pretty much in a nutshell, in half, what we were doing.
So mayor, board, and the planning commission, guests. My involvement goes back to part of the fifteen, sixteen budget year. Back in the fourteen, fifteen budget year, a project was proposed for about fifty thousand dollars to study street tape design with a budget of three hundred thousand dollars in the subsequent year, which would basically look at the existing streetscape, the street furniture and stuff like that, and also do a study to look at what could be done on the far region. And in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we upgraded that three hundred thousand dollars to four hundred thousand dollars. Thinking it was a little more money, really helpful there. The fifty thousand dollar study, which was, we commissioned Bob De Bruin's firm to do. We hired a landscape architect firm and we had a couple of charrettes here with stakeholders. About thirty or forty people were invited. And they basically, through the guidance of the gentleman from the landscape architect firm, they talked about what was important to them. And then they were given dots to put on all these topics then. Where the most dots were, the person went back and designed what we have here today, showing what could be done. Even though we only had four hundred thousand dollars stacked against some project, the design elements that he put in there led everyone's imagination to the eight to ten million dollar spend that could be happening under these circumstances. So since then, we haven't moved forward on it because we've been dealing with the fact that the budget didn't match the expectation. And the original expectation was much smaller than the one that it had grown to become. So I guess tonight's meeting is really to have a work session to discuss where we, what we want to accomplish, where we need to go, and how we're going to pay for these things. Along the way, we've done some research on the last time streetscape was done. Just for background, Mr. Shelley's here this evening, so he can always correct me or answer what I say. But we've done some record, we did some research over the minutes. We found that back in eighty-six, Seventh Street was done. And in ninety-one, New Hyde Park was done, and ninety-eight, Franklin was done. So the three business districts were done in three phases over a twelve-year period. Each with their own dollar value. I assume they all had the same type of combinations, although we don't have a specification for that right now. So let's go right now, basically. We have a lot of, I think we have more will involved at this point. I don't think we all agree on what it is we want. And I'm not also sure if this study that was done, I haven't seen it in a while, if you include the back end of the story, it's just the front.
And two things just of note before we start. There's a gentleman at Just the Facts Media. He broadcasts our tapes and films them, and they're available on the internet. I saw the ones from the Ford Media last week, they're actually pretty good, thank you. Trustee Menudo just joined us. He is not going to get his chocolate milk because he's late. Anyways. So I guess there's so many competing needs and wants and goals here. But I thought we should try and get into a room and figure out again, what do we, what do we need to do? What do we have to do because of whatever reason, safety, whatever it is? Maybe next level is sort of what we really should address. And then kind of third level would be, you know, wants or whatever. And certainly there'll be some flux between any of these. Certainly, I think everyone on the planning commission, the board, the chamber, we certainly want to address any safety kind of issues. So where there's a big hole in the sidewalk or whatever it might be, broken curb, all those are kind of things we have to address those and figure out how to get it done sooner rather than later, and how we're going to pay for them. So that's probably the largest thing that I think that was the...
There are also a number of safety issues in the village as well. You touched on sidewalks, there are a lot of broken curbs. There are a lot of depressed sidewalks, they're very unhappy. People are tripping over them. Quite frankly, walk around the village in a chateau. It's not a good advertising for the village. Peeling paint, there's brackets sticking up on the sidewalks from having the trash can somebody took apart, but the brackets are still coming up out of the bricks. Hey, looks bad, it's dangerous.
And certainly this impact of the way it looks also impacts everything else, so, exactly. Sidewalks, so I think, Joe's here, Ralph.
Is he married? I have a question. Are they going to go over this packet like in your presentation? Or are we just asking questions based upon what we saw?
I assumed everyone had read this and they've put papers to us months ago. So I assumed we're aware of what's in there. So yeah, sure, absolutely. I mean, and again, I think, you know, on some level, there is, you know, there's a, again, a hole, depression, whatever it might be in the sidewalk, that's got to get repaired. And I might as well throw it out there right from the start. So typically, if I'm a homeowner and my sidewalk is cracked, I get a notice from the village. Fix it, we'll fix it, you fix it, you're paying for it. So I think we have to be aware of that and we have to decide what we want to do on that. Well, I'm not taking comments at the moment. You know, there were other things in this plan we could talk about, you know, maybe a business development BID was a way to go for those kind of things. So we should be aware of this issue and we got to figure out how to deal with it. But sure, anybody have questions or... Go ahead.
When I was looking through the packet, there was a couple of things I had. First of all, one of the things that you mentioned was the rear entrances of the businesses. I know that many of them on Seventh Street are not handicapped accessible, okay? One of the things that I also know, having been on the traffic commission, is that there are ADA guidelines, even though they have laws. But bottom line is they're guidelines in which all municipalities have followed. And the ones that haven't followed have been sued and have lost literally every single time. So my thing of it is, is that if in the event, however we proceed with this, my first point is, is that I'm assuming that whatever we're doing, whether or not it's the walkways on Seventh Street or whatever, that all of that would then be, would then be following all these ADA guidelines that they had instituted. Am I correct?
Right, code compliant.
It's code compliant, okay. And the other thing that I have to say is that one of the things that frustrates me is the trees that are planted on Seventh Street. They look pretty, they're very nice. But it amazes me that we plant the trees that have roots that are as massive as these things are. Now, again, I'm not an arborist, but I know that there are many different types of trees that have many different types of root systems. And some come up. And the bottom line is, I would assume, and if you didn't do it, I would think this, that if in the event we were to redo Seventh Street, we have to give serious consideration of removing those trees. Because I don't know how in the world we could either put half pavers or concrete or whatever, because whatever we do, those trees are just going to keep growing. And they would then, over a period of time, would be in the exact same position that we're on now. So I may be wrong, but maybe you can enlighten me.
No, you're not wrong. Trees on Franklin specifically, the roots of maybe sidewalks are area.
Right, and also on Seventh Street.
And Seventh Street as well, right.
Yeah, but we're not focusing just on Seventh Street, though.
No, no, I know, but I'm just saying, I'm just...
If we're having this conversation, let's just, if one of us or several of us says Seventh Street, I think we mean the...
It's all the area we look at.
Well, the three areas, we're talking about Seventh Street, Franklin Avenue, and then also...
Yes, so I'm taking it, if we don't always say New Hyde Park Road, don't think we're doing it.
Part of that was back to that insulation, which I think was a work of fact that was done back in the years.
Right.
I believe the bricks are on a sand bed and if we were to go through that, there's not a concrete slab, which made it more expensive. Also, there's nothing to watering these plants in these flower beds either. It's one of our recommendations, they're going to, they die because they're not taken care of.
I know, it's always an awful thought of putting plant life and then not having irrigation, right? They would never...
You would think?
I never quite understand that one. The only other comment that I will make, and then I'll be done here, is that in taking a look at the three projects, New Hyde Park is by far the smallest of the three.
Also has least problems as well.
Exactly, and the only, my only thought process would be is that if we were to decide to move forward with this, I would think the most common sense thing to do would be to do New Hyde Park first. The reason for it is, is I'm just saying to you, sometimes when you lay something out and then sometimes when you do it...
You learn.
You learn.
Yeah, of course.
And the thing of it is, is that I think that if we're dealing with an area that is much smaller and easier for us to do it, if we were to go through whatever we were going to go through in all three areas, I think it would make sense for us to start.
It's smart to take it for a test drive, that's true.
That's my only...
But that area also is the most dangerous area because we can't cross the street.
And that has nothing to do with me being a representative of trustee.
No, it's not, no.
It's nothing on the plan system. That was just my...
We noticed that right away.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Just want to make that clear, I meant nothing to you.
You're already getting that... Yeah, exactly, right? But again, I think, you know, if we were deciding that X has to be done, let's say even out the sidewalks, you know, the next question is, okay, do we replace them all before, without doing that, which jumps you from the, I'm just making up a number, the, you know, million and a half dollar project to the nine million dollar project. So, you know, I think it's one of the things we have to figure out.
I think it's pretty obvious, mayor, that we cannot do all, everything at one time. A. B, I think we have to immediately address on a temporary basis repairing anything that is a safety issue. Just do it temporarily. C, I see no sense in replacing either Franklin or Seventh Street with pavers. We've made great strides in using cement or other materials. Pavers make absolutely no sense to me. From the very beginning, within weeks of, or months of the being installed, there's been problems with it. My thought could be to start in one area and to, if it's New Hyde Park Road, so be it. Or just do a, start in an area which is in the worst shape on Franklin. Because we do not have the money to do everything at one time. And getting back to a comment that you asked, I think that we do have to understand what the obligations are going to be of the property owners on Franklin and Seventh Street and New Hyde Park Road as to whether or not, and Franklin and New Hyde Park Road and Seventh Street, as to what the property owners' obligations are as residents' obligations are to repair sidewalks. Now, I appreciate the fact that many of the sidewalks, they just kind of call joint ownership. The property line goes out so far and then the village is responsible for the rest of it. But I think that has to be, we have to take a look at that. Because as far as I understand over the years, the commercial residents or commercial people in the village have not been required to pay for any improvements on sidewalks. And I think that has something that we have to look at. We may have the ability to move forward more quickly if we are able to charge them for at least a portion of repairs that have to be done.
I mean, I think there's also other things where not just pavers, you know. I know I've asked, I'm sure several of us have asked staff, we need a better way to fix lighting more quickly. You know, relying on a police officer to maybe have noticed these three lights are out doesn't really work very well. Because it could be two or three days before they notice it. Then it's two or three days for it to sort of get into the system and then it's another week for us to get a hold of anchors. So I know Mr. Suazi and Mr. Francesco, we've been, you know, trying to focus on a better system for that as well. And that's part of this discussion as well, fixing lighting and making sure it looks nice and works well, of course.
Yes, sir. Joe, what's the useful life of these pavers? Are we past that? Is there any sense, we have a sense of whether we did a full power washing of these pavers, whether we could sort of, you know, enhance them at all? Or are we just past the useful life?
We're past the useful life. If the things that we had got, I think it was mid-eighties or early nineties, and yes, we reached the useful life. At this point, power washing them, they're going to break, it's going to be more trouble. It's probably going to be more damage.
Can I ask you a quick question? What are we saying is useful life? Like, are they crumbling or are they, what's the biggest issue that the current pavers have?
It's the crumbling. The fading is the fading. I mean, that's, the look is what it is, but no, it's the... The integrity of the stone itself.
Hold on.
There's a lot of misinformation going on. Much like, you know, if you could help...
I believe it, I fully anticipate we're going to get into a more open... I'm just trying to sort of get us started and where we're going to go.
I would throw it off anyway. When I read through the packet, what I thought about maybe a more surgical use of the dollars would be to augment what we have there or to kind of supplement, even if it's through, you know, enhanced vegetation and beds and things like that. You know, I just want to be sure we're not removing one paper to put down another paper just for the sake of putting down a new paper. I understand the life of a paper is a new thing that I've heard, I have to be honest with you. It's masonry, it stays down, and when they need to be replaced, they replace individually. So that's one thing I would wonder. Is it necessary and should we focus on the larger issues of just like kind of more of the beautification? We spend a lot of money on the pavers, you're getting less trees, you're getting less flower beds, you're probably not getting irrigation to all the vegetation just because it's a numbers game at some point. So I wonder if the paper, you don't, you know, we don't kind of repair and replace and then focus some of the effort more on some of the things that the average people in the village will really appreciate. Oh, there's new trees and there's more, there's more trees or enhanced vegetation. I just, I don't know if it's whole...
Well, as far as I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but if we were to do this, part of the problem with the current papers is that they're not ADA compliant. So if in the event we were to do any type of reconstructive work, the sidewalk then has to be ADA compliant. And what would happen is no matter what we would repair those pavers with, it would not... Am I correct, Joe?
So Joe, what does that mean? So we're talking about just alignment or...
So back in last March, former trustee Silver directed the inhering department to do an evaluation of all sidewalks for co-compliance in all business districts in the village, Franklin Seventh and New Hyde Park Road. The results of that, when we went back and spoke to contractors on getting, or just getting the sidewalks into compliance was somewhere in the neighborhood of two point seven to three million dollars.
But what criteria are they using in other words?
ADA compliance, a half inch... I'm sorry, yeah, the quarter inch standard that we use for all sidewalks in the village.
Meaning alignment between pavers can exceed a quarter inch.
That's correct.
Got it. So like if the same criteria was used, let's say, on a cobblestone street downtown, would they say it wasn't ADA compliant? Probably, I'll answer you, probably. But then they, everybody likes walking down that street because it's really cute and quaint and feels interesting to look at. No, no, just saying, you know what I mean? Like, so it's might be inherently in the material, but I don't know if...
Yeah, hold on, it's not the material, it's how it sits.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, so it's more...
The pavers are now ADA compliant.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good direction. It's just the way that they're settling, I mean, it's been settling for thirty years. So yeah, there's bound to be some inconsistencies, guys. But what I mean to say is, you know, they're not, they're not throwing out cobblestone in streets in London or New York for a squirt of concrete for ADA compliance. That's, I would just need to hear a better argument than ADA, Lord.
I'll take it. I'm just clarifying, when you do a construction project, you have to bring up the standard. If you have something you're not touching, it's grandfather under the law. If you do a construction project, if we do a sidewalk, we've got to make the corners ADA compliant. So the law, when we do a street, the pedestrian street today in the neighborhood, we have to do pedestrian, when we do a road, we have to do pedestrian walkways by law within the nexus of the road. So we are compelled to do it by the law, whether we can afford it or not.
No, sure. Which is why, again, I ask, should we be messing with the pavers? Or should we focus on other things like vegetation, beds, Chinese?
I think part of the, part of the problem is there were big sections of the paper that we had fixed. Repair is different than replace, I...
No, I think, can I jump in here?
Absolutely.
I think that once you touch the streetscape, right away, all of these regulations from the ADA come in. They're not really law yet, nevertheless, they're compelling and we have to follow them. And it would involve cutting off the crown of the road. It would incur, it would involve using cement strips going down so that people in wheelchairs or with walkers could easily walk into a store. I mean, it's quite, it's quite an undertaking. On the other hand, I would say this, when I look at page eighteen in this book of the suggestions for Seventh Street, and I think Seventh Street is the heart of our downtown and it's where a lot of people spend most of their time. And we would really like to keep that looking good and keep it looking up to date. Otherwise, the village starts to look a little tired, a little sad over there, and we don't want that. The thing of it is that I had a question about, I thought that the treatment of Seventh Street on page eighteen, under alternatives, well, that's Franklin Avenue, right. Look at Seventh Street drawing there. You look at that drawing on the bottom of the page, about Seventh Street. It does a beautiful job of renewing the landscape. It does a very good job of, sometimes it does a lot with the curb. It brings the curb in, it brings the curb out, if you look at it. And it also advises raising crosswalks. Now, that's a whole, that's a complex undertaking. I think we ought to talk about it for a few moments. Seventh Street is not a really wide street, right? And when you look at that drawing where it brings that curb out, near the crosswalk, is this all, I would think, that this is all too well measured out and it could work?
Well, it's also creating a speed bump.
Say that again?
It's creating a speed bump in Seventh Street.
Yes, right, it does, slows everything down. I'm just wondering, is Seventh Street wide enough for all that?
Well, we're not proposing this.
Oh, you're not, okay.
That's not a suggestion, that was done by De Bruin.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, well, nevertheless, do you think, does Mr. De Bruin think that those measurements can work?
I would say yes, since he put it in his report.
Yeah. They bring...
We may not agree with it, like, I don't agree with that sign.
If you narrow down, it's probably going to make the traffic worse.
That's what I was thinking. It looks good, but I can see problems, yeah.
Narrowing is a technique to slow down traffic. People tend to slow down when the lanes diminish. So it's a technique to protect pedestrians by narrowing lanes.
I just think, I thought it was, you know, an interesting concept, I just didn't know it was really...
If we, you know, I'll take some comments, please, other members who are...
What, you guys?
Two questions I have, is, one, I noticed on recommendation, it was number twenty-six, it said archway for Seventh Street. I didn't see any pictures of this, but what are you talking about? An archway on both sides of Seventh Street?
I thought it might have been when Seventh Street is closed down as a pedestrian mall, if they had an archway to identify that, it might be a nice feature to have in the village.
Easy towards the street.
Well, here is my... All right, here's my other question. If you go on Covert, one of the things you notice is that the street that we have, they have parking at an angle, okay? And obviously, that's something that we can't do on Seventh Street because of the width. What I'm saying to you is that if we made the sidewalks narrower, could we then not have that pull-in parking on the same angle like Covert would have? And if we did that, we would significantly increase the availability of parking on Seventh Street.
Yeah, but parking lot is one...
So not a parking lot on Seventh Street.
I understand.
Right.
You said parking lot, you did a lot of stuff. What, we got two lanes and technical in each way, you can't have people backing out to that stuff?
Why not, they have it on Covert. We didn't examine the dimensions of the parking school, even if it's a sidewalk. Right, no, I mean, I'm just saying, I've lived in the Garden City since ninety-five and I've been up and down Covert for twenty-some odd years. And they've been doing it and, I mean, and I'm saying it doesn't get busy for different reasons.
What is the, what's that problem? I thought we first, I kind of laid out first, let's focus on things we have to do. So for example, redoing sidewalk because they're not safe and somebody's lighting for it, who's, what are we going to do? We place it with the pavers and just even it out and make it flat?
Well, that, I don't know. But what I'm saying is that if in the event, you know, because this just simply ties in, because what I'm saying to you is, if that is a possibility, now you're talking about less money being spent on the sidewalk because you have less sidewalk in whatever design you do. But I'm saying to you is that one of the major issues and problems that we have for our commercial industry is that they need additional parking. And what I'm just saying to you is that if we can, in a sense, kill two birds with one stone, if we can make the street wider and then if we could have angle parking and make the sidewalks slightly smaller, what ends up happening is you could probably double the amount of parking availability on Seventh Street.
Do less in the area available for tables, right?
Yeah.
Well, Covert, they don't have, do a dining, do a...
On the list of what you're saying is just on the boat.
Yeah, I'm, to just, to just echo maybe or organize the discussion of it. There's, there's the identification of what do we do about the sidewalk? Is it a replace or is it a repair? A replace is very expensive, I think you, you know, you can imagine, repair. And then there's, you know, the kind of beautification piece, which is another kind of subheading, right? About how would we go about, what would we do with trees, the roots, the kind of, you know, whether or not in the proposal, you know, you use exactly that vegetation or not, or kind of look to value engineer. I think once you, once you kind of pick your shots on the sidewalk, I think it'll free up other things for us to do, again, that people will really feel. I'm not sure, like, my mother's going to walk down Franklin Avenue and be like, this squirt of concrete is way better than the old paper. I don't know that she's going to feel that. But if she walks down and sees these beautiful trees and big flower beds and there's alfresco tables and things like, I think everyone goes, wow, this was worth it. I just, you know, so it's kind of sidewalk beautification. And then I think there's kind of, to your point about, the kind of more structural changes.
Right, and the only, the only thing that I will say is...
And how it all worked here.
Because of an issue that we looked at at traffic and Mark mentioned to you, and Joe D can give you guys a copy of it, I think that, and I could be wrong, but I understand you're sitting here saying, do we want to repair the sidewalk or do we want to replace? Those are two totally different costs.
Yep.
I don't think we have an option. Because I think that when we get to a point, if we are repairing, you can correct me, Joe, if I'm wrong, if we start repairing the sidewalk, which we need to do, we then are going to have to change the pavers because we cannot leave the pavers the way they are. They do not meet the current guidelines. So that, tell me if I'm wrong, Joe, but I don't think that that's an option.
No, it's correct, we can't ignore the pros and cons.
Wait, wait, stop, stop.
That's not the question.
Okay, that is not correct.
Be careful how you ask this question.
The pavers in and of themselves have nothing to do with the compliance, okay? It's not the material. It's the way they sell, it's not me too, because that's why, that's why I asked the cobblestone question.
If we level them, we're open ones, we don't have to.
And if you level them, you're in co-compliance, and leveling them, even if that, you know, the, the one or two million dollar number, it's probably still half or a third of what you'd pay to replace. I'm just, in other words, to value engineer this thing, I don't know that you're gonna replace everything just to put another thing down. Which, by the way, other payers will still settle.
Well, we, we had a presentation that was given to us in, in the Traffic meeting, and the gentleman basically said, the only way that we could get around this, if I correct, I remember the size, was to put a forty-eight inch strip of concrete right down the middle of the payers. Because he said you could not, in meeting today's guidelines,
Yeah.
just have payers. So, I, I'm just going by what was presented to us this past sixty years ago, and Joe, if you're.
No, no, for sure, I think it's, I think it's a point of view, I, I think that's a point of view.
That, that is correct.
Change this, that's an end we have to make.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a point of view. I, I gotta be honest with you. I, I don't know that, like, you need a forty-eight inch slab of concrete. I'm, I think, I think I did it first, sorry.
Well, this, this would catch their pause.
No, no, and, look, and I'm, I'm sure in your business, there's ten ways to. Go.
Chair, Colonel Ray Chakowski of our office.
Yes.
I came to speak to some of the things that.
Sure.
One of the things I just want to. Kind of mixing apples and oranges in a way, because the vintage is a difference between the payers that were put in twenty years ago and the payers that are currently being used. And if you simply walked, uh, and Ray can explain the construction, if you walked over to our building at eleven forty Franklin Avenue, there's this Fidelity, the new Panera, Sterling National Bank is on the corner. Those are more, those were done, what, five years ago, Ray?
Eleven.
Eleven years ago, they're like new. And as far as you were saying, your mother walking down the street, trust me, if you walked from Eleventh Street where there's concrete in front of eleven hundred Franklin, and then passed our building at eleven twenty-two and eleven forty, again with the Fidelity, you feel the difference, it's a much more pleasant walk.
I, I'm, I think we're in green, and that's.
I don't know if you've walked there, or walked around our building at thousand one Franklin Avenue.
Yeah, I've walked up.
None of those have to be replaced. Mr. Matthews, it's, it's not an aspect of comfort, it's an aspect of the guidelines that were established in two thousand eleven.
And that's.
It's applied with the, that, that, right?
Those bricks, those slabs, good, those brick pillars and slabs.
And that explains the difference.
Yes, good.
When those are replaced now, are disintegrated. They're, they're, they look like payers, but if you went to take a paper out, it crumbles in your hand like sand. I know because I personally did it two weeks ago after the last tussle. And the spot replaced papers that are popping in place. Expansion contraction from snow and infiltration of water, freeze-thaw, salt, sand. You're beyond a useful life of over twenty-five years. It's basically sand in the shape of a paper. It's, co-compliance is a secondary issue, it's its appearance, its safety, and its function. All of which three you fail at. All of which three, the village and every landowner is at stake. I currently have five lawsuits against our properties and I'm defending, as a property manager, from tripping faults allegedly, from a situation I can't control, that I were attached to as, as a landlord. Furthermore, the crosswalks, the corners, the ADA compliance becomes a rindee. For a blind person, they approach a corner, they have to have a ramp with a knob to head. So, they feel it with their feet that they're at a, they're at a crosswalk. The crosswalks have ankle breakers every three feet. I can't walk as a healthy young man, well, I don't anymore.
That's healthy, go ahead.
As a healthy guy, I can't cross the street without navigating down, without running, getting hit by a car, because I'm, I'm afraid of breaking my ankle. Where the concrete was poured and the plateau was filled in and it popped out and they put this red fake brick concrete in, painted a white line over it, it all popped into it. It's, it's ankle breakers, it's, it's danger. So, with, if it was my money, am I telling you to spend the village's money?
Oh, yes, we are.
But my, my, my principle is.
So, I think, I think it'd be helpful, so what is the difference between the money you put in?
You can't compare it, well, it's put down twenty-five years ago.
But just illustrating the difference in the construction.
You see the construction on TV, Home Effect.
Yeah.
It's a concrete pavement that's dyed and has a sealant coat on. The payers at eleven forty were done in two thousand and six as a part of that property renovation work, it's all been used and I did it.
Now we're expecting.
We did it.
And it's a, it's a paver on a concrete slab.
On a concrete, on a crush, 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 cupcake. So, we put down a four to six inch base of cupcake, with sleeves every forty feet, so that next year, ten years from now, you can put irrigation, lighting, power underneath the.
So, a paring conduit in the.
Correct, PVC tubes. Little anticipation to the future.
Nice.
You pour a four to six base, you, you press it with a press, and you set the stone on top of that with a one-inch Portland sand mix. Those payers have been there eleven years, we do every single thing, every, two years we've had, it hasn't moved a second, not a quarter inch. It's not about ADA compliance, it's about quality of material, quality of workmanship, and design, period. To everyone else's point about safety, if you walk south on Franklin, from ten fifty Franklin to towards Seventh Street, you cannot walk in a straight line. Someone had a vision years ago of putting a cobblestone planking bed to your beautification idea. We have a bed that geometric shapes that make no sense. You go from eight feet to three feet to seven feet. Landowners don't break leaves, they don't plant flowers, they don't break, they don't smell. You can kill yourself walking down Seven, Franklin Avenue, the main part of Franklin Avenue. Of Garden City. Seventh Street, Franklin Avenue. It's about landowner requiring, requiring the landowner to maintain their property, designing and installing the proper material. If you're talking fifteen to twenty dollars a foot, if you're talking thirty thousand square feet of payers, you're gonna buy this job at a unit price low enough to pay for what you're talking about, and then two years from now, then plant your tree. Don't plant your trees in, on in grades, because you're gonna pop. Every single, every single tree grade has popped, guaranteed it. With eight fifty Frank, eight fifty-five Frank, we're revel and use, if you look on Franklin Avenue, there's a planking bed, there's trees in there.
So, what, you guys, oh, sorry, so what do you, about, have you guys like to pair notes to say, this is what we spend per square foot on the payers on the gravel as opposed to a forty-eight inch
I'm on the, I'm on the, I'm on the committee.
concrete slab down the middle, is that what, I think, you can understand in order of magnitude, that's kind of a big deal.
Only my, it's only my opinion, huh?
Yeah, no, no, but you have a scientific experiment sitting a couple blocks away, so if it's working, do we know how much that costs as opposed to?
Your, your, my opinion. Payers. I'll forge quickly, with water to maintain the integrity of the edge, it's done. We get twenty-five years out, guaranteed. And your grand, your son can sit on the committee twenty-five years from now and say, my father wasn't walking down the street.
Yeah, broke his ankle. What was that, how you mean, that's about these papers now?
It's, it's the aesthetics as well. You can't go back to concrete, that's what, that's what was replaced twenty, over twenty years ago. And the fact is, it was a great investment on part of the village. And the village has now allowed that to deteriorate. I mean, the grand bargain that we said before on Bob Oliver Group notes, the grand bargain was, the village would invest in the street scape and hopefully that would inspire property owners to invest in their buildings. And I think it worked, in most cases, it worked very well. Certainly the buildings we own and others, some of the other property owners that invested and proved them. But there are a few bad apples, and we knew that at the time. And the promise was that the village would take care of, you know, maintain those properties, those, the, uh, the payers in front of those buildings, those, those areas would be maintained by the village. Because certainly, all the buildings we own, we've taken them off the village's hands. We've taken that, you know, for that expense. We maintain irrigates, no removal, repairs, we've done that all, so. It's just a few areas that we are relying upon the village to take care of. So, uh, you know, one of the things that might be done is, did the work out. See, rather than speculating, you know, what the cost might be, do what we've done in our buildings, we got the spec, and, and spec Franklin Avenue. South, always have is, that's what we've been doing.
Always higher.
Well, you don't even know what that is right now, oh, do you?
We do.
We have some.
But as in.
I think we also need to know what is our responsibility as well.
Well, as I started with, that is a large issue. If it's a, you know, if it's my sidewalk in front of my house, I pay for it. So, I don't know what the grand bargain was, but I do know, but I do know.
Well, we pay taxes. We pay taxes.
So do I.
I know, but the difference is, we're supplement, we're, we're paying school taxes, a proper, a proper, we're not sending skilled children to school. We don't use the pool, or at least, all of those assets.
We, we, we know that, we know that's an issue, we know all these.
But that's, but that's the deal. Otherwise, you know, we're, we're getting, we're paying, it's, it's, we're getting paid twice. And that's what distinguishes Garden City where other downtowns have problems.
Well, we do, we do know, for example, that Floral Park, you pay for your sidewalk, whether you're a restaurant owner or an office building. We know that happens elsewhere. I, we get it, okay, like I said, that's something where.
What are the taxes per square foot, or you gotta, you know, and that, I don't know what else they're paying for.
But wouldn't it be fair for us to ask?
Okay, how many of the, the landowners that we laid out this money for and did all these improvements and are thinking about doing again, are people gonna agree they won't file a tax, tax cert claim for the next ten years, fifteen years while we pay off this money? Is that, isn't that a reasonable question? I don't know. Go ahead, Mr. Darren.
Yeah, I'd just like to apply a little bit about the whole study that was done by DeBruin and, and a couple things for us, then. We spent one Saturday afternoon, the planning commission and the, the group there represents the chamber, and we walked all of Franklin, all of Seventh Street, slowly looking at every tree grade, every, not every paver, but every group of payers. And I can tell you, if you took the time to do that, you'd realize how tired this village looks. In fact, if you look at that picture that's up there, it looks a little tired. So, when, when you, when you see the payers, and listen, hey, if, if the payers are the way to go, I'm fine with that. I, I think we have to do something to, to replace, and if you can, to replace the ones that have fallen apart. They were put in more than twenty years ago, and a- as everybody said, if you look, they're chipped, they're broken. The county also has a lot of responsibility on Franklin, because every single corner, the concrete has fallen apart, where their catch great basins are, and, uh, a lot of it's county work, right, Brad?
County, yes.
Ken? Um, so, that will be, how will this gets paid for? I, I think, again, to Russ's point, we have to get some estimate of what things cost. You know, the sidewalk issue, who owns what? When this was originally done, the building owners paid for their portion, I don't know, it's ten feet or, I think it differs a little bit on, on Seventh Street and Franklin. They paid for that portion, am I right about? No, the village paid for the whole, whole thing. Okay. Uh, so there is some dichotomy in sidewalks, or what the building owner owns, and then the village owns the rest, so. How will this gets paid for, you know, I think one of the things, um, you know, we have discussed is a business improvement district? Because I think would, you, it would be wise to take the ongoing maintenance of whatever, planting beds, all of this stuff, out of the realm of the vigil, village budget, so that when you guys have been in your budget, taxes that are paid into a business improvement district, take care of this issue, so.
Can, can I ask, maybe, Russ, you know, why wasn't that, because that's in there? That was one of the suggestions in ninety-six, a bid, what, what happened to that?
Create a business improvement district, it was determined, Bob Shelley, it's very difficult. It, it would take at least two years to accomplish.
No, no, I understand that, but that was part of this.
Yes, it was, it was a recommendation, and when we explored it, we realized it wasn't, we wanted to get on with the work and get the building owners to invest in buildings, and it, again, it, it all worked out great. But, you know, like everything else, after, it's, it's twenty, it's twenty-five years later, I can't believe I'm here to, to, I'm talking about.
Do you have, do you have any aversion?
If you look, if you took it, that four million, and advertised it over the period of time, and you look at, you know, what the commercial tax revenues were then, and, and then what they are now, I mean, the, the rate of return is madness, so.
For sure, and, and I, I don't wanna.
And you could bond it, and you know, I think.
Let's just, let's just talk about, I, once we start hitting the money issue, it's like a dead end. So, let's just keep, let's, while we're ordering dinner, let's just order dinner, let's not look at the bill yet. Yeah, do you guys have a, a version to a BID? Because they're extremely successful, I mean, anything in Manhattan that's worth looking at is, is resp- has been made possible by a BID. Is it just the paperwork, is it the, is it the two-year lead time, like, what, in a real way, like?
There's a world of difference between Manhattan and the critical Manhattan.
Not really, not, not something.
Really, no, listen, I, I, we had a consultant at the time that actually was involved with the bids in the city. Okay, and he came out and we spoke before, I'm trying to think of who that was, by the way.
David Wildwood? David Wildwood?
Yes.
David Wildwood.
Yeah, yeah, well, he was the consultant, but there was another very prominent, uh.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
You remember this?
Yeah.
His father was the chairman of, of North Shore IJ.
Correct.
Anyway, uh, we could retrieve what was discussed, but it was, it was, it just wasn't practical.
It's probably all. Yeah.
Because you, uh,
Is there not enough memory?
The value, there just isn't enough value there. And, and it's another, it's a whole nother bureaucracy, it's another payroll, it's another layer of government.
Mr. Matthews, in, in all, in all this, Doug.
Sure.
Whatever happened twenty, twenty-five years ago, this is today, this is not twenty, twenty-five years ago.
The village hasn't grown, Bob, it's not like we've got another million square feet of, of space.
And what I, what I was saying is, is that how we move forward, one of the things we need to do, obviously, at some point, as Lou had mentioned, is let's talk about the options of what we have. And then is, at some point, when you get to a point of what the cost is, and what we have to figure out is that how we're going to do this between the village and between the owners themselves. Okay, this is something that needs to be done together. And to be very frank with you, I, I really don't want to hear about the argument that, you know, I pay my taxes and I don't have any kids that go to school. I always use the example, I've been here since ninety-five, I pay my taxes, my taxes fund the library every single year. I've never taken a book out of the library once. Doesn't make a difference because it's part of what makes this community what it is. Our school system is one of the main reasons that makes our s- place the way that it is.
Mr. Bob, I, I don't need to be lectured, I, I'm well aware, I'm here.
I understand, we know each other.
I understand, yes, okay, so.
But, but that's no safety, the bottom line is that how we move going forward, if we look to do things, we're gonna have to have some type of agreement or arrangement between the village and between the, between the, the commercial base. So, that's, that's the reality of going forward.
Okay, so, may I, in response to that, and it has been done in the past, when the parking fields have been improved over time, one of the things we have, we have benefit assessments. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's one way of doing it, is to come up with a budget and then identify the benefit assessment district, borrow the money, you know, with ten years or fif- whatever, I mean, interest rates are still low. We were recommending this years ago, and the ten year was at two and a half, so now it's three, was, was listening to. But I, I think there's certainly a way of financing it and then spreading the cost. Around, all, all of the buildings would be, uh, would be taxed. So, it, 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 it's better than doing a bid, because if, one way or another, if you're saying we have to pay for it, that may be the more efficient way and the faster way of going about it, because it'll be two years before we get a bid.
We'll figure it out, yeah.
Because you have to, you have a vote, there's a whole process.
Can I, can I ask, and maybe this is impossible, of, of the sort of recommendations? Dennis, you have something to say about BID, sorry, I saw your mouth and.
No, I was just gonna say, the, the idea of the bid is for maintenance going forward, it's not paying for the, the construction phase that it sits, so that, you know, take planting bits, tape, um, power washing, all of that stuff, take that out of the village budget, where it gets short shrift at some years and not others. It's just the maintenance piece that way. The construction side of it, I agree with Russ. Uh, when we did the parking lot, um, there was a benefit assessment, um, which was a three-hundred-foot circle, uh, which took in Lord Taylor, it took in where Health Trax is, um, and, you know, and we've done benefit assessments on a number of occasions that have worked very well. And if you took the entirety of Franklin and Seventh Street, um, I think we have a little over three million square feet of space. Uh, so, you know, depending on, on how you apply it, um, you know, it, it, it can work. And the village, obviously, uh, can borrow money a lot cheaper than anybody else.
It's what you're, yeah.
What, Brad, and please, anybody, talk on the committee, please. Is there a way to kind of help us understand or decide what things, again, there's, there's safety level things, we, we all recognize that. Does improving the way the, uh, planting beds.
But does improving the way the planting beds look, et cetera, does it really result in more office rental? I mean, how different are we today than twenty years ago after all this work was done?
The vacancy rate on Franklin Avenue twenty years ago is probably fifty percent.
I understand that.
It was a ghost town.
What was it, what, what was it, what was it forty years ago? It wasn't a ghost town. So, it's just, is it cyclical, it has nothing to do with planting beds?
There's a lot, it's a lot, it's just, uh, I mean, things have changed. I mean, keep in mind, retailers change in his life. You could write a book on what, it was, it wasn't an internet, there was no iPhone. Things were very different.
Right.
But, um-
I mean, planting beds have nothing to do with Bloomingdale's not being there anymore.
That's right.
No, it would be, what, what function do we wanna encourage on- Right, that's what I was getting at, yeah. If you looked ahead, I know things don't last thirty years or eighty years. But if you said, ten years from now, or five years from now, we want, just making this up, we want, you know, twenty restaurants and pubs on Franklin Avenue and nighttime seating and traffic, walking traffic, that, your sort of end, your, your goal of streetscape is different than, it's just gonna be office buildings. Am I wrong? Please, anyone chiming in, am I wrong? Which I may well be, I'm just the-
You have to change the look of the street if you want that.
It has to be-
One paper, another paper, it's like the negative.
Okay, so I would ask, I would ask, hold on.
Your question was regarding office space.
Well, no, no, here's my next question, because you're, you're in a landlord with primarily office space, right?
Yep.
When you look ahead, five years, ten years, what is your goal of this streetscape stuff? Is it just to make it nice and pleasant to, to make it walk-on between office buildings? Or is it to, because you're going to change the model of your buildings? I'd like to understand that.
Airport first.
Sorry, I was gonna say-
Airport.
All of Frank, Franklin Ave, you know, the, one of the things is, you know, Sears building is in contract. Things are happening all the time. But Franklin Avenue should be aesthetically one of the finest boulevards on Franklin Ave, I mean, on, on Long Island, anywhere. It should be inviting, pedestrian-friendly. That brings tenants to the office space, to the office spaces, and helps lease the ground for spaces.
Okay, okay, so, that was, you know, part of this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Did that work? Because I don't see people walking down Franklin.
Absolutely, Ross.
See, no one walked on Franklin twenty years ago, okay? You didn't have left, one of the things that happened is that the village didn't complete the process. We were, no, we introduced lay-by parking, right, which was very controversial at the time. From Ten, Ten Street to Stewart Avenue. And it was planned to go north, but that was aborted.
Russ, no one is walking down-
The villagers did follow, so there is a difference.
Russ, no, no one is walking down, up and down Franklin Avenue. No one's gonna sit there on Franklin Avenue and have outdoor dining to any degree. The reason for it is, they're sitting there with the amount of traffic that goes up and down Franklin, that's not gonna happen. It's very successful on Seventh Street, simply because you don't have the same atmosphere that you do on Franklin. So-
If we can get some more-
Well, I'm gonna give it away.
Hold on, let me get that, yeah, John.
Got the mouse and then the-
See the ceiling outside of Kings?
Thank you, um, I think you hit it, Manel, ahead. I think we, we shouldn't think of these Seventh Street downtown any different than Franklin Avenue. They should both be as beautiful as they can be. And, and I, I agree with Mr. Matthews on one thing. I say, we, you know, we, we start projects, we don't complete them. We start building something, well, it doesn't hap, it doesn't work unless you finish the job. We started to improve, uh, slow down the traffic with parking on Franklin Avenue, and then we stopped. But the other component of it is, we're not integrating uses. We're not, we're not making walkability. We're not creating an environment with people on Franklin who could either be in an office, or on weekend, they could be living above some retail uses. We have to get to the point, I think, where we're doing all of it, all of it. And I think that's why I'd hate to see going through a lot of expense on Franklin Avenue. Somebody later is gonna say, well, you know, we need other uses on Franklin, and then motivate those, I'm gonna tear it all up. Like when you're doing a road, and then Loco decides that we're gonna introduce gas to the road.
That's probably what we're trying to avoid.
Right, so, so I think you, while I'm not trying to elongate the dialogue, I'm trying to say, you should be looking about what you're gonna do on Franklin Avenue if there are any proposed changes. I truly believe if you leave it alone and you let medical office dominate it, you've got a hospital that is gonna take it, people are gonna come in, they're gonna sit in waiting rooms, they're gonna go in, they're out, their destination, right for that meeting, they're gonna leave, they're not gonna go down to Revel or one of the other places and have lunch, because that's not what you do. And they're gonna be gone, and then on evenings, they're gonna be gone, weekends, they're gonna be gone, it'll be a ghost town. And no one will ever walk it, there'll be no reason to. You start, we started a process years ago, we've gotta complete it. I think the village owner design is spec, it should be, for lack of a better one, I don't think anyone has a problem with the Albany streetscape spec. That should be the village spec. Pelé's is just finishing. What are they gonna finish their front with? They should be mandated to do the spec in front, so that's off the chart, that's off the radar. We don't have to worry about that any longer. It's all gotta match. And they should be mandated to do it. Now, I, I represent developers, I think the trade-off from a village's perspective is, there should be some latitude and leniency in what a developer may wanna do. I think we have to be prudent about what they're gonna do. But there is a trade-off here. This should be paid for, not by the taxpayers and the residents, it should be paid for by the businesses, but they have to get something in return. And you have to have a village spec that can then work up and down. And the small shops and stuff that are never gonna get that done, the village has to do it. And you have to maintain it. I like the idea of data or some component where it's maintained by the people that live there. My office is on Seventh Street, I'd pay more as a tenant if my office looked as nice, my streetscape looked as nice as Albany's looked. And I think most of the tenants feel that way in buildings, that could be, some of it could be passed along. But I think you need to decide what we're doing on, on Franklin Avenue, because if we allow it to be developed with just medical offices, then you're never gonna need, well, you, you'll need the streetscape for those medical offices, they'll pay more, but we won't get, as a village, we won't get the maximum benefit.
No, I, I think what the mayor's trying to ask, and I think everyone on the board is, is coming to the same, you know, mentality here is, like any, any design problem or issue, what are we designing for? Are we trying to encourage a certain amount of traffic? Are we trying to encourage, uh, you know, um, dining and things like that on Franklin? Because that would then necessitate a, a certain set of design criteria into the proposal.
Yes, yes.
Regardless of who's paying for it. I'm just saying, what collectively are we trying to encourage?
The term is called walkable downtown.
Say again, sorry.
Watch, watch the news, it's walkable downtown. That's what generates retail business on Seventh Street, that's what we do on Franklin Avenue. The, the concrete thickness of Boulevard, I'm like the Albany organization for fourteen years. When I came here, nobody walked Franklin. Today, I walk Franklin on a regular basis throughout the day, there's a lot of foot traffic. You have Panera, outdoor seating. You've got Franklin Avenue, thousand and one, where we have the outdoor table with more defendants and other people to sit and walk up and have lunch on the side of Kings. You've got Kings, we reach, if I maintain, we maintain that. We own the property, we maintain that seating area with landscape beds, pavers and tables, and wine. We go to Revel, we go to Muse. And I can continue down the Franklin Avenue, Carter. It's a proven fact, we're developing a wine niche, a walkable downtown. Go to that job, a walkable downtown.
Ray, I understand your points, but again, here's my point to you. Where's the seating on Kings? Is it on Franklin Avenue?
It's tucked in on the left side.
Is it on Franklin Avenue?
It's adjacent to Franklin.
No, it's on Eleventh.
What's that?
Okay, it's, just listen to it, it's on Eleventh. And when you're sitting there talking about Revel, Calle Garros, or any of the restaurants, my wife and I go there, we drive there, we go have dinner, or we go have lunch, or whatever. And the people who will go to Panera, I go to Panera all the time, I see there all the time. People all coming in there, they sit there, they'll sit in the back, whatever, okay? But, again, this is, I just, I do not see with the level of traffic and the level of vehicles that go there, that you're, you're thinking that we can create that atmosphere that you have on Seventh Street.
I'm not suggesting for a second that you want the building on Franklin Avenue. Frankly, I fear for my life walking down the street most of the time, and I'm serious. You need speed bumps on Franklin Avenue, forget tables on the sidewalk. I mean, it, it's, it's absurd, seventy miles an hour from red light to red light. But the problem really becomes, it's a walkable corridor. You want people to walk out of thousand and one and ten fifty, or any other office building on Franklin, walk down the street, go into the new perennial, go to Ramalde's, go get your nails done, go to Kings for a sandwich, or you just walk the street, that's what you want.
Yeah, I, I think Lou's point is right on the money, that we have to first envision, what are you building for? And I think that's, that's, that's the whole principle.
Abs, absent, absent the Albany's quote-unquote stamp, look, I agree. We need to have, the village has to dictate what it wants on the sidewalk and commercial car period.
I just wanted to, yeah, I could, I could say something. Uh, Michael Ventry, I've lived here since nineteen ninety-five, I'm a commercial real estate broker, and presently the president of the Chamber of Commerce here, although everything is said so nicely amongst everybody else. But it is becoming a walkable corridor. I mean, I sold nine-ten Franklin, there's a restaurant going in on the corner, there's a restaurant going in right next door to that. When they put Panera up on, uh, an Albany's building, we first thought about it and said, are they crazy? Who's gonna go to that Panera up there? But yet it's busy, because you've got Franklin Avenue Plaza, they walk out, John Wilton is completing a deal with Franklin Avenue Plaza for another restaurant. It is a walkable, uh, uh, area. Again, I'm not saying that the cars don't travel fifty miles an hour down Franklin Avenue, but you've gotta look back and say, years ago, it was Fifth Avenue, it was shops, it was shopping, it was walkable, I guess, at that point. It turned back into Wall Street at some point, where it became all financials and banks, and it wasn't as walkable. We've gained, how many seats now, Dennis, over the last, uh, five years? Um, we are becoming the restaurant row of, of this area. We are trying to attract, as a, as a chamber, the thousand or so apartments that have just been built up in Mineola. We want them to come down and walk up and down Franklin. Albany's properties are pristine, absolutely pristine. And I think, as, as, as they say, the other owners of the other properties have to step up as well. That, that's, that's key. You don't want it going strictly medical. Because now, there is issues right now with the Sears property. What would everybody like to see at Sears right now? You'd love to see some retail downstairs, you'd love to see potentially residential upstairs, let's not get into all that, but do you wanna see it with New York, New York Langone? Because that's probably where it's going. And that's gonna take that whole side of the street out of the picture. But what's happening on the west side of the street on Franklin is it is becoming walkable, and that's what the young generation want. They wanna work upstairs, walk downstairs, Starbucks, restaurants, and that's where they wanna go. They wanna live upstairs. They wanna live like my mother and father lived, above the Yellin', Corona, and, and, and walk downstairs and go back and forth. They don't even wanna own cars anymore. They don't have money in their pockets, no cash in their pockets anymore. They just wanna go around with their phones and just, you know, enjoy the, uh-
I, I do agree with your point that they are walkable, but the majority of the people who are walking there are walking in the back. If you go, well, let me finish. If I go to Ramalde's, which I've gone several times, that's where they have their tables, people walk in there. I go to Panera tons of times, easily, three-quarters of the people that are walking into Panera are coming in there. If you sit and you look at Water Zui, and that Italian restaurant, I can't think of its name right now, that's right next to it. Again, bottom line is, they have outdoor seating.
I know that.
It's in the back. There we go. And so, I'm just saying to you-
But you're inviting with the- Hold on, hold on, hold on, I, I was actually, do you, I'd like to hear from you.
You.
Yes, owner. Part two, yeah.
You.
Yeah, I, I, I think when I think about bringing in tenants, so I'm a tenant, I'm not an owner. There's a lot of good discussion about, like, when I interview people, one of the things I say is, is you cannot work in a better place than you are now on the corner of Seventh and Franklin. And so aesthetics, I think, are important, but I will say this too. I have a guy that works for me. He went out to go get lunch the other day, and he tripped and fell, and he came back. So, listen, it's not an easy decision to make, but when I think of risk management, which is constantly in my mind, we have to stop, we have to stop talking about this. Hey, when was that first, um, what was the first thing you put together, brother? When was the first thing you handed, uh, who, who's the guy, who, who put the, the-
The circles?
The Bruin, the Bruin.
Do, when, when did they put that together? Three years ago?
No, no, I, we understand that.
But my, but-
Wait, wait, okay. But here's the problem, is the real problem.
Yeah.
Okay, fix the sidewalk.
Yeah.
But with what, and with what goal in mind?
Aside from the safety, because Jim spent three million dollars fixing the sidewalks, and then a year and a half, and now saying, you know what?
We should've done granite slabs on them, because it's much nicer, and it would attract much different people, a better pe, better level of people with more restaurants, then it was a wasted money.
Let, let me just finish what I was saying, right? So, I get all the stuff you're saying, listen, you're an architect, you guys, I, you forgot more than I'll ever know about what you're talking about. But you're asking me as an owner in a business? I've sat in these meetings, it's the fourth one I'm sitting at, and we keep kicking the can down the road, asking the same questions. So, coming from the corporate world, when you sit in rooms like this, and you get fired when those things happen, something needs to get done. Hey, listen, I'm, I, I couldn't tell you what it needs to do, and I know it takes money, by the way, too. I listened to the Chamber lunch where everybody was like, hey, I got a great idea, let's get the CEOs quicker and just hire more people. Listen, I know that stuff is not easy. But at the end of the day, safety's an issue. The fellow from the Albany's that's talking about, one of the first things I said when we were in that meeting, was you're gonna, here's what's gonna happen. Some people that are around here, there's an element around the area that makes very good money tripping and falling. And so they're starting to pick up pretty quick, right over there, on where they could trip and fall. So, a year from now, we're sitting in this meeting and having the same discussion, and we're talking about insurance for the village, insurance for the landlords, and then on top of all that, we don't have enough insurance for the ten million dollar lawsuit that happened, because Benny was gonna be a hand model and fell down over by the Albany's organization. We're gonna be going, we should've done something about it. So, again, easy for me to say as a, as, as a business owner, something needs to get done. But once I sort of sit in the room for the fourth time, and I'm hearing there's a lot of agendas, a lot of discussion, there's a lot of analysis paralysis going on here, at the end of the day, we gotta pick a path, make a decision, and do something about it, or we're gonna be sitting here twenty-two years from now having the same discussion.
Agreed.
Brian, would I can say something to that? If I, can we let, can we let other people speak, Bob? No, yeah, no problem. I will tell you that in this April, I'll be a trustee, you know, for five years. And the two people who are on this board with me, John DiMauro and Brian Donnie, um, I was lucky enough to be part of when the things got done. I understand your level of frustration, but I think to some degree, you have to give the board a little slack. And here's the reason why I say that.
Yeah.
Dennis worked with us-
No, no. But Dennis worked with us, and we got the senior senate done.
And a lot of people said, you know what, the senior senate done. But you know what, never gonna happen, we all heard about it, it got done. The mayor here was a real proponent and pushed to get a lot of the things done. We have two brand-new turf ballfields out there. We have a multi-purpose field. We have our, our, our parks and everything else, where everything is being done, everything else. And the board, and Brian, really pushed for that. And you know what people said? I've heard that forever. When we went to the GCAA and we said, listen, we need everyone to contribute, we need everyone to be there, they were tremendously against it. I was on the board for fifteen years, and they sat there and said, we've heard this forever. But the bottom line is, is that one by one, we've addressed everything. So, what Brian is pointing out is, is that regardless of what's happened in the past, if we do well on that, we get nothing done. But this board, whenever we come to address something, we have to do it to address it.
And, and, let me just, I gotta say one more thing, I'm sorry. You asked me a question.
No, no, I, I appreciate the comments.
And so I just wanted to say, no, I, I appreciate, no, no, and I appreciate-
This is, this is our discussion, it's not us, but I totally agree, I hate this setup.
But whatever it's worth, just one more thing, wherever it's worth. I get all that, listen, I don't really care about the past at all, I've been here for five and a half years, man. I don't really care what happened twenty-five years ago, I wanna learn from it, but I will say this. When you sort of ask the question from a business owner's standpoint, the last four meetings I've been at in the last, it's been the last year, not the last twenty-five years. And so, I get what you're saying, and I don't want you to walk away thinking that the people in this room are coming at you and saying, you guys don't know what you're doing. But ultimately, you gotta stop kicking the can.
And no, no, I, I-
Let's talk about same pool.
I wanted the input. Yeah, no, and I think to that is, there's a certain amount of sticker shock that goes into this, which makes everybody freeze and then track a bit. I think it's good to, at least for me, I don't know about everybody else, it's good to hear that, um, you know, it seems like there'd be cooperation from the, the businesses on cost, that certainly helps. Um, and then I, I do believe a BID is, it's crazy that we don't have one. If we wanna be the fifth avenue of Long Island, guys, you gotta have a BID, I'm sorry. You can go anywhere, I mean, not just Manhattan. Um, it's, it's essential, you guys can get things done and maintain it, and you can hang and breathe, you do whatever you want. And then, you know, along with that, I think there does need to be, I think there's a consensus that people want pedestrian traffic on Franklin, and I'm not sure that the designs that I've seen in this panel are a hundred percent, um, you know, taking that into consideration, uh, having people really walk and spend time on Franklin. I think from a traffic point of view, and just from, you know, creating some areas of, of, of rest or stoppage, and, you know, some features, uh, not unlike the Little gazebo by CBS that they did years back and things like that, and those things matter if you're trying to encourage, um, walking and- if you're trying to encourage walking and...
Well, I think we have a chicken in the egg, like a lot of problems, right? If you had 20 more restaurants, there'd be a lot more foot traffic, how do you get to 20 more restaurants? Just as an example.
Yeah.
I just have three little comments. One, as people leave here tonight, if you drive past Franklin where the Albany's buildings are, where Rebel and Kings are, you'll see all the trees lit, looks spectacular, it always does. You know, it really sets off a nice tone. The second thing, when we, I know it got pushed away for the time being, but the diagonal park is shortening the sidewalks. This village, one of its quaintnesses on Seventh Street is outdoor dining. So if you shrink them too far, you're gonna lose that. And third, looking at the long range for this, I know Sears was mentioned a couple of times. I think the village ought to be looking at the east side of Franklin Avenue from Stewart to the Old Country Road as a possibility of adding residential above retail along that corridor where the parking lots are all big. I don't think it would work on the west side, but, okay, that's it.
Could we maybe, okay, one more comment on sidewalks?
To take what Michael said, what Lou said, what Russ said, okay. This reminds me of a Morantz commercial, where the guy's sitting in the chair and his hair is blowing back. All right, think about that commercial for a second. The reason I'm saying that is, Lou, you've hit on some very interesting concepts. Next time it rains one inch, I'm on Seventh Street every day, my office is on Seventh Street, I walk in every single day. I know every single merchant of the 21 leases on Seventh Street, I've done 19 of them, I got a pretty good handle on what's going on. Next time it rains an inch, just go outside, just see where the puddles are. The reason I'm saying that is, take a review of that, do those repairs. You're never gonna be able to fix the trees. Our trip and fall ratio on the trees is horrific. So what we should do is box them out to a certain height limit, just around them. And people are gonna say, well, the car door hit it from the curb, so be it. But at least that's resolved an issue. The other issue that we have is, it's springtime. Do you realize that we've had 19 leaks in four years ripping up the streets every year? Every year. By the way, the landlords and the tenants pay for that. So when you say they're not contributing, they're contributing significantly. So there are issues that could be solved somewhat economically, without having to incur a lot of cost. And there are certain indentations that you'll see. I don't disagree, I do disagree to a finite number on Franklin. Franklin has, the walkability on Franklin has increased dramatically. I have a tenant that, this is really a cute story. I have a tenant that signed the lease right down by Fairchild, and he took the building, he's putting food in. And I talked to him about traffic impact study, he says, John, I'm doing my own traffic impact study. He got there every morning at 6 o'clock for a month. He sat there with a counter. He got there every day at 11 o'clock, his wife got there at 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock, and they had counters. And he said, I'm doing my own traffic impact study, I'm putting all my money into this, I'm gonna make sure I make a profit. He did the same thing on Seven Street. Interestingly enough, the numbers were really interesting to study. I didn't really review the numbers, he just said to me, John, I'm signing the lease because I can make money here, because the pedestrian traffic exists. So I think if we look at the entire system here, we, look to your issue, it's not the pavers, Bob, it's, or the quarter inch differential. I think a great deal could be done at an economical level. Take it, even if we don't, even if we don't bring water to the trees, or whatever the case may be on Seventh Street, for an economical, we could make it, we could reach, we could make that landscape look that much better. You know? So, I mean, the solutions aren't, they're there, they can be done, and a cost-effective way, I think, is a village. And by the way, we're not gonna get any more retail tenants. We are gonna become restaurantified, supply, that's it. We can no longer attract retail tenants in our village, they can't afford the rent. There's just not enough return on their investment. It is, it's, 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 might, you know, better than anybody else. I mean, we're not gonna attract retail.
Does anyone comment?
You wanna create pedestrian traffic, listen to Dennis, and put residential on the east side?
I understand, that's not in our...
I'm just saying, Dennis, you can do more so than what you want, for the future.
I understand, I understand. Can we move on? Go ahead, yes, sir.
I have a suggestion, a little research. You wanna try plastic breeze and plastic flower, you know, the irrigated... People won't trip over the little seed, but you would try it, you know, it's...
Can we move on? Especially, yeah, can I just ask one thing in a serious way, though? From the enhancement that you guys did from 2011, I guess, or '06? Can you forward the construction details or like some quick sections or stuff to the broader...
I'm on the mission, I'm just gonna discuss it.
Okay, easy, okay, okay. Just so we can see a couple other points of view, other than a 40-inch thick bumper.
Everybody seems to admire Albany's way of doing things. They have quotes for how this occurred, for the square foot we worked out. If we go and look at the Seventh Street pavers, we can figure out which parts really have to be modified in order to eliminate the tripping hazard. Get the number of square feet, get the total number of square feet, and then we can at least get a ballpark number on how much this is gonna cost.
We have a ballpark number.
We have a ballpark number, though, but it's not exactly in line with the method that they use. Is it close? Is it pouring concrete, is it using the crushed...
I don't think it's pouring concrete. Might have the initial exalts again.
Joe, what was it, Joe, what was it based on? Just before you, you know...
Moving the existing and replacing the new pavers on a concrete bed.
On a concrete bed, see, that's the difference, that's a big nut, right? But go ahead.
And for the three streets, the North Park, Franklin, Seventh, which is approximately 165,000 square feet sidewalk, the price is around $5 million, and then at about $30 square foot.
$30.
That's not what I suggested, though. That's to do, that's to take the trees out and spot over it.
That is, that is, to be fair, Billy, you're absolutely right. It's to redo the entire thing, as opposed to spot fixing with maybe a new methodology, and then focusing some time and energy on some of the other street skate items, which...
We don't have a number of concrete...
Replace the pavers, though?
That's what I mean, yes, replacing everything.
Joe, Joe, maybe what might also be helpful is, we did, we had an engineer consultant look at Seventh Street for ADH marketing. Maybe we wanna get that engineer's report to everybody on the board here, so they can have an idea of what we're doing.
Yeah, just one last point on the Albany spec. I think that cost, if you impose it on an owner doing, you're not gonna get this on Seventh Street in a small shop. For a larger development, if you impose it on an owner as what they have to follow and do, they're gonna get it done a lot cheaper than you're gonna get it done. And that's the way you should do the big project. Look at Sears, for example, that's an enormous piece of Seventh Street, that's the way to look at it.
Yeah.
Just like, just, you know, what we've done, the plantings that were designed and constructed by the village, under the street skate project years ago, we've irrigated those planting beds, and that's why the plantings thrive. But, you know, 10th Street South, that hasn't been...
No, it wouldn't make sense to do this unless we're gonna do this right.
Which can be, by the way, can be easily coordinated with the building owners. It's really, it's not that difficult. I think it was done, Dennis, was it done with one?
We did one last year with both electric and water, yeah.
And I thank you for acknowledging the holiday lighting we've done. You could drive down, if we didn't, during Christmas, during the holidays, or even now, the only buildings that have lighting, and finally, grossed it, they look to the natural. And Rebel, they've asked us to keep it year-round because it has helped them, they do a lot of parties. And in fact, they had a wedding when we first put the lighting up before Christmas, coincided with the wedding that night, and the people loved it, they took pictures out in front, and it really makes a difference. And if, think about it, how the village focuses on Seventh Street, and Fifth Avenue is neglecting that. We tell you, it costs about $40,000 to $50,000 to do what we do every year. So in terms of spending money, we do. So, anyway, I just appreciate your...
I like to switch topics, but go ahead, Brian.
Move our comments, the backs of the buildings, you know, part of the back lot and the children's front deck. Right? That should have to be legged, and we'll study it.
Well, how do you propose we would do that? Not study it? We can't tell a landlord to fix the back of his building?
Why not?
So, I mean, why not?
Why can't you?
How can I?
You have to tell him why something, not why everything, but there's some, sometimes... Dennis, you can put, tell him, look, you gotta move this back.
No, I understand, but that's not what you're talking about. You're talking about like the improvements that were made behind...
On me.
Yes.
Right, right.
Okay, we can't force someone to do that.
Drain is bad on the lot, kind of, Water Zui, I think it is. Garden is exposed, that door has been rolled out.
I understand, that's not fixing the back of buildings, that's completely different. Okay.
But not repair the building, I understand, but the area around...
I'd like to focus on, again, there's only so many things we can do in moment A versus moment B versus moment C. Okay, so I'd like to try and narrow this and get something done, okay? Which is, I think, our goal, to get, you know, whatever we can done, and things will take, some things will take longer, and some things we're not gonna do. So, yes.
What Greg, I think, was referring to is, we discussed in detail between 9th and 10th Street, behind Romaldy's, behind My First Sons, where are we going to fix these sidewalks and still have a river, a three-foot river when it rains heavily? Because the parking lot irrigation is a problem, is that what you're referring to? Okay, they misunderstood, you thought they were coming at the back of the buildings.
No, not the back of the building.
Behind the buildings is the parking lots. So let's not throw a good money after Ben, I put some sidewalks, and you can't get to those sidewalks without being needed even more. Same thing on Seventh Street, a lot of the business owners are having issues with, I believe it was the sewer lines backing up, the impromptu grease traps. So we start putting these sidewalks in, we have to not do that until that problem is fixed. It goes all the way down to Third Street, because they count...
Well, okay, just on that note, we're gonna have a camera real soon on 7S. And we're gonna catch who's dumping the grease in the sewers. Catch faces. Stories.
So, just to answer, you mentioned Water Zui, the owner of Water Zui is here. Yes, we met with him personally, and we already have a paving, it's scheduled paving this coming 18, 19 season, once the budget's approved.
So we move to a different topic? Okay. And parking was part of this. Do you guys have a opinion, a sense of, you know, we're trying to fix like the white parking lot, make that better, more attractive for people to use, take some pressure off of 7S? Lately, some of us have been talking about, why don't we have valet parking in our lots? Wouldn't that relieve a lot of pressure?
Where'd you put them? I think it's a good one, our parking consultant mentioned that as well.
The other thing is segmenting some of these lots. Have certain areas where it's resident only, in my view, is, why is it different than train parking? If I have an apartment next to the lot, I should be paying.
Pay for it.
You know, and again, maybe that works with the valet parking, but we're waiting for the parking consultant, kinda...
He's involved in that now.
Would that work in any of your, your buildings down the, well, behind Rebel? You have a parking crunch. Would a valet be acceptable to landlords?
I don't think it, we haven't... It had a problem.
Well, if you go there, as a customer, if you go there on a Friday or Saturday night, it's horrible.
You gotta walk a block. If you're in the city, you're on fire.
I understand that, but why, 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 why?
Would I care?
Why not segment it? And the parking building, people who are there for a long period of time, why are they right next to the commercial and the restaurants? They should be in a different part of the lot.
If you're asking if we have any objection to having valet parking, certainly we'd have.
I would ask if you paid the parking lot to light on, that'd be nice. Because there's angle braces throughout the parking lot, there's butters, drains along the curb. The front door of Rebel, on the corner which are raining, is underwater, the drain doesn't take water.
You can just... You can park them outside.
Yeah, it's covered. So focus on the puddles, focus on the lighting, focus on the drains, 1, 2, and 3, valet parking for it.
Garbage is an issue also, commercial garbage. We oughta, we oughta at least think about compactors. Because the, the, the boxes that we put the garbage in today, I mean, listen, a lot of it, the cameras will help a lot, because people, I feel sorry for the sanitation guys, because people throw the garbage over the top of those pens that they're in, and...
Why do we pick up, why do we pick up commercial garbage?
They pay for it.
Why do we pick up commercial garbage?
It's the paper.
They pay for it, and we pay a search charge on top of the taxes. The sanitation and search charge per property, probably about $6,000 a year, and per move, on top of the taxes, why not?
Just get rid of the search charge and get rid of the...
Something the village should look at, because on the Seventh Street side...
I think, and I'll give you, you deserve the credit, a lot of those enclosed bins were your idea back when we were in Ford. So, and, you know, some of our, some of our commercial tenants don't respect that and destroy them.
By the way, regarding, regarding the condition of parking lots, it's understood by the commercial property owners that the village, the village coordinates and performs that work, that again, I had to assess it, you pay for it. I mean, after all, we own them, we would do it.
I'd do it anyway. We do it anyway, behind 1050, behind 1001, behind 1055, at 855. My maintenance staff surveys the lot and cleans up the garbage and the hedge.
But not the, not the conditioning, the paving, that's what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the loopholes and all...
We all manage, right?
All right. Specific things we need to talk about? We've made some improvements on the white parking lot, we have more to go. Again, we're trying to make that a more attractive place for people to park. And that was also mentioned in this 20 years ago. I seriously think the valet parking should be part of it, hopefully, the, when do we have a feel for when these are gonna be? Two months, or?
Almost two months.
So what's the next steps for this whole proposal? It's for us to decide what we wanna emphasize and get moving on in the A4.
Brian, is the safety issue, you're correct.
And even if we have to do it on a temporary basis, before we make a decision on what we're gonna do, the safety issue does concern me. Does, Joe, do we have a list of, has anybody given you a list of where the safety issues are?
It's too broad. Old County Road to...
Why, you don't evaluate?
No, no, wait a second. No, there are safety issues and there are other issues. I'm talking about immediate issues. I mean, I've heard enough tonight about how bad everything is, but if you've got a safety problem, we need to get on top of that immediately.
As of today, the biggest safety problem is the grates. That's the single biggest issue right now. That's, only discuss it, go walk down the street, it's the greatest.
Do we have them at all? Why can't we get them next week?
The idea to box them out, I think, is probably the same. I think there's...
I don't think the ground is depressed from the edge of the pavers.
Yeah, it's like a, it's like, so filled with gravel.
Or something, you gotta put them back in the void, so...
I'm sorry?
There are other things that you can put around the trees besides metal grates. There is asphalt, there is perhaps artificial turf. There's other things that other places do besides metal grates.
So let's not do anything, let's not spend too much time looking into, okay? Let's get rid of the grates, let's put gravel, how about that?
Is it just Joe's this year?
Pink gravel, whatever color we want, matches the sidewalks, faded pink gravel. So, yeah, so if this is for Joe, just come back to the board with a, with a plan of action, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we do that? We can, you can, you can show us three different ways of execution with prices attached, and then you'll pick for it.
Does that sound acceptable? So we can do a gravel, we can do a box out?
But Lou, I don't know, I mean, it would appear to be that whatever we do on the grates is gonna be a temporary thing. But the old work has to be done.
Yeah.
Why don't we just do it? I mean, fill it in right now with gravel, immediately.
I'm just saying, I don't know if gravel's the best thing, and you're even like, I've filled, for example, the apron on my driveway. I must have filled that thing at least three times in the last year with gravel. People walk on it, move it around, and gravel disappears. Maybe there's a boxed-out solution that's a little bit more, you know, durable, that would let, you know, last until we actually do it. And one that looks nicer, though.
Do you guys have an opinion on that?
I wouldn't use asphalt, I wouldn't use asphalt, I'd look at the gravel or asphalt. I wouldn't be that's all, but they'll look at the gravel or ask for... You have to prepare the ground, except for the gravel. Dump the media screen, it also slows, walk away Renee.
Mr. Mayor, the only comment that I was gonna say is everyone is discussing what the next step is. There's only one next step. And the one next step is, one of the things that I brought up to the board, is we need to have an overview financial position of the village to know where we are in our bonding, to see our overall amount of money that we could consider spending. Because we can sit here and come up with 27 different ideas, we don't have the money, doesn't make a difference. You can go sit there, you can go to the fanciest car dealership you want, can't afford the car, doesn't matter. So the only thing I think that we need to do, which I know that Ralph and the finance committee is working on, is we need to have an understanding of the needs that we have in the village and the different apartments. And we need to know what we can spend. That's it all.
Yeah, one comment on the gravel, I think every kid walking up and down Seventh Street will pick up a handful and throw it at the park cars. We might wanna think about three wood chips that are up at the dump and fill it in with the wood chips. One other thing is, I understand the whole street skate conversation, but the first thing that was said tonight, I think, was there's missing trash cans and there's metal spikes sticking up in the ground. That's just a routine maintenance thing that shouldn't be waiting until there's a room full of people to discuss. That's something that somebody in the village the next day, when they find out about it, should be out there rectifying it.
It's in the south of Seventh Street.
Go ahead.
Before you go, wait a minute.
Okay. And I'll have to, get anyone out. We're gonna get moving, so. I appreciate everyone's time. Yes, sir.
Sorry, just...
Just final comment.
You know, it's, when the weather is nice on Franklin Avenue, the office tenants, what distinguishes us from Melville, you don't have to get in a car and drive somewhere. They walk out of their offices and they walk down the street. And they enjoy walking down the street, the restaurants on Franklin, even down to Seventh Street. So it's very important that it be safe, that it be clean, that it be well-managed. And the fact of the matter is, that will drive traffic to the merchants. That will...
Make cars or...
The value of the building, it will be secured.
Well, we're never gonna change its four lanes. Should we, oh, is that true?
But the lay-by parking, that did slow the traffic between Stewart. I mean, when it has a long range view, we gotta go back to what was originally planned and that would be continued. And, you know, just, and speed was missing. But that's another shit thing. It was far worse before the lay-by parking was introduced.
I'm gonna ask, so who doesn't like speeding? How many of you have written a letter?
Yeah, on speed cameras.
Anybody?
Yeah.
Uh-huh?
Two, three.
Because we're not gonna have a policeman every block. That's reality.
Different issue.
Different issue, but I got an audience. Write a letter.
Read the letter.
Yes, sir. I think the board trustee should consider sending aside some sum of money to spend in the near term on beautification, on a broad scope, not just on Seventh Street, but on up and down Franklin and on Yewy Park Road. Some amount of money will be, maybe Joe can come back, maybe Kevin, in terms of flowers, peaking things, something to spruce up the place. Not a tremendous amount of money, but after we handle the hazards, you know, the potholes, things like that, in the near term, without breaking the bank, I think we should consider spending some amount of money on strictly beautification over and above what we generally do. I know we planted, you know, 30,000 bulbs, but you know what? There's more to be done and I think it really adds to the village if we do it. And as I said, not just on Seventh Street, up and down Franklin and on Yewy Park Road.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
We need water to do that, so. Okay, well, thank you all. Appreciate it. We will get moving. Sears on Seventh Street.
Can I get a motion to close?
Ah, Sears?
Trustee renewed a base that a motion to close is in favor.